Please take the roll. Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Coleman's in place.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And tonight, we have number 25 has been withdrawn by city manager for further study. Number 40 has been updated and to continue to the April 7, 2025 meeting. And 48 is updated. That's the speakers list.
Move.
Second.
Please vote.
Linda.
Is it Linda?
Yeah.
If you want to push that harder.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is approving the consent agenda. That's items three through 32. These are routine items that will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately. And tonight, we have 7H by Voss. Without entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is start of our hearings. Number 33 on conveyance of vacated alley right of way adjoining 926 40th Place and 925 41st Street to Capital Homes II LLC, doing business as Cutler Construction Company and Cindy L. Fitch and Paul E. Fitch. Jermaine comments from the general public. Two minutes per person to speak. 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none.
Seeing none. I'll move item 33.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 34 on conveyance of flood protection levy as easements for relocation of a portion of the southeast Des Moines levy system as required by the southeast connector, southeast 30th Street to U.S. Highway 65 project to the United States of America, acting by and through the Secretary of the Army. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
She wants to speak.
Can we get a...
Coleman. Will you grab her a microphone, please?
You want to state your name and ward or address.
Hello. My name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward 2. The thing is, is that I like about having flood protections because I used to live in the Chicago region and it used to flood all the time. And I've had it where like the basement of my apartment building flooded. This is when I was living in the Chicago region, along with certain streets too. So I think we need flood protection so things don't get flooded out like it did in 93. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I...I don't see anyone else, I'll move 34, Your Honor.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 35 on conveyance of approximately 180 feet of the vacated north-south alley right of way, extending south from Carpenter Avenue between 24th Street and 25th Street to Velo Des Moines LLC for $25,300 in acceptance of a permanent easement for the public ingress and egress. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Entertained them.
I'll move...
Seeing no one.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Coleman.
Mr. Coleman.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 36 on conveyance of city-owned property at 913 Douglas Avenue to home opportunities made easy incorporated for redevelopment of housing, council communication number 25-087. Any Jermaine comments from the general public? Come up and state your name and ward or address.
Clinton Webster, Home, Inc., 1618 Sixth Avenue West. Just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for your continued support and then take the opportunity to thank the entire Neighborhood Services Department for which, without their continued support and partnership, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So if there's any questions on this, I can certainly address them now. Okay, thank you.
Thirty-six.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote. I think this is another one of our infill projects that we talk about, creating more housing, so.
Councilmember Voss.
Counsel.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number 37 on a license agreement with Capital City Pride, Des Moines, for use of a portion of street right of way at East Grand Avenue and East 5th Street for a temporary art installation. Again, Jermaine comments?
Seeing none, I'll move item 37.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 38 on request from Grace Methodist Church, Clint Martin Officer, to rezone 1070 37th Street from P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to N5 Neighborhood District to allow the property to be subdivided from the church property for the use as a one-household residence. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of the ordinance above, waiver requested by the applicant and require six votes. Again, we'll take Jermaine comments from the general public. Up to two minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to that?
Seeing none, I'll move item 38, 38A and 38B.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 39 on request from PPDSM LLC, Adam Seeran Officer, to rezone 2005 Southwest 9th Street from N5 Neighborhood District to limited N5-2 Neighborhood District to allow reuse of the existing structure for two household residential dwelling duplex. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is final consideration of ordinance above, waiver requested by the applicant, require six votes. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 39A and B.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 40 on request from the Italian-American Cultural Center of Iowa, Jeffrey M. Lamberty Officer regarding property located at 2633 Fluor Drive to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification for portions of the property from neighborhood mixed use and low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use and for approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Butler Mansion PUD, Planned Unit Development, conceptual plan to allow a cultural and events center use with building modifications, a new building and other site modifications, and to continue to the April 7, 2025 meeting.
So I just want to say I appreciate, I believe, the parties are working together on this and collaboratively, and I think that's great and to everyone's benefit. I'll move item 40 and look forward to hearing from folks on how this progresses.
Second.
In a few weeks.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
This will come back on April 7, 2025. Item 41 on a lease cost agreement with Housby Mack, Inc., to replace Refuge Truck Fleet every two years for four years, not to exceed $2 million and to continue to the March 24, 2025 meeting.
Move item 41.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 42 on 2025 sidewalk and pedestrian ramp replacement program. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as C-2 Creative Concrete LLC, Abigail Needham, owner $378,911. Council communication number 25-093. A is approval of the contract and bond. General public can speak to these plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered. Jermaine? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 42 and 42A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 43 on East Euclid Avenue sidewalk from east of East 14th Street to Union Pacific Railroad. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as C-2 Creative Concrete LLC, Abigail Needham, owner $239,940. Council communication number 25-094. A is approval of contract and bond. Again, general comments?
Hi, Garland Armstrong, Ward 2. And I hope this will be a good one, especially more sidewalks, because we got more people mobility. Like, for example, if they're going like to the Burlington Trailways, a bus stop there, and need some more sidewalks instead of going in the streets, especially if there's more grassy part. We need more extended right there to it because, especially if you're coming from East 14th Street, going to the Burlington Trailways, that would be a good accessible part because there are some who want to take a risk at it. And I hope they get more sidewalks like that. And then they also possibly need something like if they're crossing the street, like a little push button. So people who have to cross over like to the gas station over there to the other side, they should have like a little sidewalk part with a push button. So cars and buses will know that people are waiting to cross over instead of have to wait over by East 14th and East Euclid because we don't know how long that light would be taking over there. So need something like that somewhere in the near future. So I hope they work on this. That's my suggestion of it. If you have any comments or questions about that, I'll be glad to answer it right now.
Thank you, Garland.
I'll move item 43 and 43A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 44 on southeast 8th Street, Forest Main, resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Rognus Corp., Warren K. Rognus, President, $6,582,308.60. Council communication number 25-095. A is approval of contract and bond.
Seeing none, I'll move item 44 and 44A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item? Number seven?
Yeah. 7H.
7H, Carl, if you...
Yes.
Councilman Voss, if you'd like to discuss.
Yeah, I would. So this is a project to upgrade the light posts and the lighting in the East Village. And unlike some projects that were originally scoped, this one is costing a lot less than originally anticipated. So I ask Steve Neber if he'd come up and just explain what's going on. Why is this costing less than you originally scoped out, Steve?
All right. Thank you, Councilman Voss, Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council. My name is Steve Neber, Des Moines City Engineer and Des Moines resident. Yes, very happy that when we started out with the project, we had scoped originally to replace all the 60 light poles that exist on East Locust today. With the help of a local lighting expert, Mike Lambert, we did some further investigation, structural investigation. And in order...one big benefit is to preserve the look. As you look down East Locust Street toward the Capitol with those type of luminaires that exist today, we're able to replace the base covers, do some foundation repairs, and then just actually replace the luminaires with LED lights. And even better, these luminaires are even easier to swap out than the ones we have today. So Mike did a great job in helping us find a...work through the manufacturers to find a similar fixture that's even easier to swap out from a maintenance standpoint. So instead of replacing the whole pole, which would have been magnified much more costly, I would probably say six times more costly, we're able to actually rehab them and just replace the fixtures and even paint the poles with a tenebrous coating and everything as well.
So savings of about 3/4 of a million dollars, I think, in that range?
Maybe even more, to be honest. Yeah.
And you keep the old lights.
And you keep the...yeah, yeah.
And the hangers for the planters and banners. And so, well, I'm really happy to move this. And I hope the other council members will join in or voting yes after Joe says second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Happy to vote for it.
Fight some more money, would you?
Yeah.
Who do we... Councilman Voss, would you like to vote for that? Motion carries. Item 45 amending Chapter 118 of the municipal code relating to qualifying improvements for the private property protection program. Council communication number 25-084. A is a final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director, requires six votes.
I'll move 45, 45A.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 46 is establishing the Capital City Reinvestment District pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 15J. Council communication number 25-105. A is final consideration of the ordinance above, waiver requested by Scott Sanders, city manager, requires six votes.
I'll move...
I'll move.
46A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 47, amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding parking modifications on Woodland Avenue from 24th Street to 25th Street. Council communication number 25-090.
I'll move item 47. In pursuant to Rule 42A, I waive the second, third reading.
It's been moved in second. Please vote. Councilman Voss? We're having problems with the buttons today.
Seven yes. I think he pressed it right, as he said, so I didn't press.
Motion carries. Our next item is the public speaking time. We provide publics...we provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour on the agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments Jermaine and avoid references to personalities or characteristic taxes. Those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matter requiring attention will receive appropriate staff or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for support of Des Moines, and the first speaker is Carolyn.
That's what we used to call it long ago.
That's right. You have those little markers and you have to load them.
I don't want it yet. I will point to you.
Carolyn's going back to her teacher days.
Oh, yeah. I mean, when you're a teacher, you're never...you never quit. Hi, I'm Carolyn Yuland-Hague-Walker. I live at 411 Ingersoll Avenue. I'm going to speak...start speaking globally. And back here, you can see that my globe of the earth is covered with bandages. I brought this before, and I need it to be reminded to everyone. Our earth, our only livable planet, has bandages to show the consequences of climate change right now. First of all, there's flooding in India. There's flooding in North Carolina. There's melting glaciers where our coasts are rising, sea rise. There is drought in many countries in Africa where the animals are dying and the crops are failing. There are wildfires every part of the world right now. There are rising temperatures and heat waves and rise...total rise in people dying of heat strokes across the world. And there are...temperatures of our oceans are rising. All our coral reefs are turning white. That means they are dead. So a science teacher called me the other day and said, hey, Carolyn, why don't elected officials, we're talking local, state and federal, why don't they see all the red flags of planetary danger and make climate action a priority? I said, I'm trying to figure that one out. And then she...after the phone call, I went down and saw Maggie. She's 29...she's 95 years old. And on her rocking chair, there was this article, lights please, from the Des Moines Register yesterday. Climate change is real. Iowa shouldn't pretend otherwise. And anyway, I've got to turn my page here. In it, it says there is true climate denial at all levels of government, all elected officials. But we are asking you as elected officials, and we people here are saying, quote, in the article, we have an opportunity to lead and start taking steps right now, including restoring the City of Des Moines Sustainability Office as a priority. That was in the paper yesterday. Now, we were told at the budget meeting that political will was really important. If we got four council members to support the sustainability office, we could go forward on it. This would be about $140,000 to $150,000 to hire one person at this time. Hey, maybe there are six people that you know, even you know out there, that would be willing to give $25,000 donation to the city to start a sustainability office. Imagine what your...how grateful your grandkids would really be. I'm quite shy. I know it doesn't look like it, but it takes a lot to get up here and talk. And I want to be able to say to my grandkids and even my great nieces and nephews, when they say, did I try? I can say yes.
Adam Callanan. Heather Armstrong.
Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward 2. I want to thank the council for funding DARTS for the next couple of years because without transit, people like myself would have to take my wheelchair further. And that would be not very good because I used to live in the Chicago region. In certain parts of that region, there's no transit. I would compare Polk County to McHenry County because they have lack of transit. And they both like, even the areas where there's no transit, they still pay it through their sales tax or whatever taxes that they do pay out of. Another thing is that thank y'all for talking to Hy-Vee. Now it's accessible again. Thank you. And transit is the answer.
Thank you, Heather. Jenna Clies? I don't think Jenna's here. Joe Doleck?
Yes, my name is Joe Doleck. I'm a member of Ward 3, a resident there. Josh, if you want to help stand up your flag a little bit more there, like it has been. That awkward silence, and that's what I'm here to talk about, is I've heard too much awkward silence from the city council here when it comes to the city council's dedication to the civil rights of its citizens. 12 years ago, I had the opportunity to come to Des Moines, and I was afraid because we're here in a bunch of cornfields. I escaped Indiana as a queer person, and I wasn't going to come to another place that was...I was not going to be welcomed. I did my...I did my research, and I found out that Des Moines was taking those steps to make sure that everyone was welcome here. I appreciate the comments after I witnessed in front of my house the white supremacist group walking through, but they were a little bit too late. I appreciate Polk County's comments on their dedication to the queer community and just reaffirming those, but I haven't heard anything here. I drive by this building once or twice a day. I haven't seen the flag change. I haven't felt that warm...that warm embrace that I believe that we should have. I know that this council is willing to stand up to the state when it's wrong. You guys are doing that pretty much with lobbying for other things. I didn't see the City of Des Moines sign up against this bill that was turned into law, and I didn't see any comments come out. I appreciate Josh with your flag now, and I want to make sure it's there. I'm urging the city council that it's not too late to be able to reaffirm the dedication. I know now it's not the time for comments, and I'll be happy to talk to staff or anybody later who's more than willing. But I would charge you to please fly that flag. Fly the flag that we all stand around in June and we celebrate for. Fly it today. We need it now. We need your support now to know that we're going to be safe.
Thank you. Carol Maher. Carol?
Fairbozen and members of the city council, my name is Carol Maher, and I live in downtown Des Moines in Ward 3. The budget, whoo! I've been here throughout the journey, from the first meetings at the Franklin and Central Library, the day-long work session, the well-attended event at the Polk County River Place. I've read the 400 pages of the operating fund and the CIP budget. I've taken notes. I've tried to understand the finance and accounting lingo, but hey, that's not my first language. My ability to ask questions is limited to the online web portal. So I send in questions like these. In the past years, a log of the questions and answers has been posted on the budget page. Why not this year? And I understand the Violence Interruption Program run by Creative Visions in Ward 1 has been cut from the budget. What other programs have been cut? Subsequently, I've come to find out that CIS is being adversely impacted by our difficult situation. And immediately after the February 19 work session, I asked Finance Director Nick Shaw, who is fantastic, by the way, if he could please post the question and answers that all the council members had that day so that residents could more fully understand what was covered and the resolution to the questions. Residents need that information to understand what's going on in the various contracted services line and other stuff that requires the proverbial onion to be peeled back to understand where... understand where the cuts are. Answers to my questions, Q and A from other residents, Q and A from the council, let's see, no, that's crickets, nothing, silence. I get it, transparency is hard, it's messy, it's ugly, but gosh darn it, we need the facts. Please, please, give them to the residents of Des Moines. We can handle the truth, and the truth will set you free. Thank you.
You, Giada Maresi.
I'm Giada Maresi, I live in Ward One, most of you already know who I am. Just want to start with saying thank you, Carl, for featuring me in your recent newsletter. For the rest of you who maybe don't subscribe, I had the most submissions on potholes in the MyDSM mobile app in twenty twenty-four, which is pretty cool, I thought I might be up there, I would love if they would post a leaderboard or something, but, you know, accolades aren't why I do it, I do it because I care for my community, I care for not just my neighborhood, but the roads and other neighborhoods that I drive in, that I work in, that I visit friends in, and that's the same reason why I adopted Good Park, why I pick up trash in those eleven acres, even when I was discouraged from adopting it by city staff for being dangerous, I don't find it to be dangerous, same reason why I served on the Transportation Safety Committee for over a year and a half, pointed by your former colleague, Bill Gray. I do all these things because I love this city and the people in it, I care very deeply about my community, and I, you know, hope that that shines some light on me as a person that I don't just come here and say things to you that make you feel offended or make you feel like you're doing a bad job, I'm out in the community doing work, and even just beyond these things that are recognized by the city, doing other work and community service that you may not see as legitimate or see as a good use of time, but taking care of our unhoused neighbors, making sure that our community fridges are full for people to eat, do all these things because I care, that's why I'm here to talk to you, because I care deeply about the city. I'm really disappointed with how the public hearing for the budget has gone, I echo a lot of Carol's comments. I heard two things at the River Place meeting that really surprised me, I mean, one really surprised me, that was the presentation of a petition with two thousand signatures to save Birdland Pool, two thousand signatures, like, that's great, that's awesome, twenty-five hundred signatures were presented to you to ask you not to pass the ordinances to criminalize homelessness further, so I was surprised to hear that just two thousand signatures were something so amazing to just be so proud of, to save Birdland Pool, I'm glad the pool's staying open, I wish you also would have held those twenty-five hundred signatures with the same weight, when people were asking you not to further criminalize homelessness in the city. I also heard from Councilmember Westergaard at this meeting, "I will never defund the police." I get it, you all think defunding the police is a really, really scary concept, and the word "defund" makes you just like cower and, you know, detach from the conversation entirely. Unfortunately, if you're unwilling to discuss ways that the police budget can be trimmed and that waste can be cut down, we will continue to see every other department in the city defunded. So if you're not willing to talk about defunding the police, please be clear in your wish to defund the library by removing two librarian positions and a social worker position. I understand that that's a decision made by the head of the library, but to put them in that position is something that you all are responsible for. Same thing for cutting the office of sustainability.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll move forty-eight A through G to receive and file.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.